Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The meeting will convene at six thirty P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff or any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, November first, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty P M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a co- current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room, excuse me, on the north wall. Please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the O P S vision and mission statement.
Thank you. You can follow along at the top of your agenda. The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Roll call, Mr. Ray? Here.
Erdnberger.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith. Snipes.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Seven present.
Is there a motion to excuse the absences of Mr. Smith and Mr. Snow?
Point of order, Dr. Holman, did you hear from either of them before the meeting started?
I did not.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to school spotlight, Mr. Maskell. Good evening.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's O P S Proud Spotlight features mentee and mentor matches through teammates. And I'd like to welcome program specialist Dan Bartek to introduce the program and the match we have here with us this evening to celebrate. Mr. Bartek?
Thank you, Jeremy. Good evening, O P S School Board members and Dr. Logan. My name is Dan Bartek, and I am the O P S Teammates Mentoring Program Specialist for our district and have been a proud teammates mentor for the past eighteen years. Teammates Mentoring Program celebrates twenty-one years in our Omaha Public Schools this fall. Our mission is to positively inspire youth to reach their full potential through mentoring. Teammates is a one-to-one, school-based mentoring program, and we start in third grade and go through twelfth grade. And mentors can follow their mentees onto post-secondary after they graduate with our Post-Secondary Plus program. Our matches share life moments, milestones, challenges, struggles, goals, and successes together, and are there for each other. We are currently serving in eighty-four of our Omaha Public Schools and have over four-hundred mentor-mentee matches with a goal of six-hundred matches. Besides adding another caring adult in our students' lives, Teammates also provides opportunities with post-secondary scholarships. Five of our students received scholarships and are now attending Metropolitan Community College and U N O. Isabel Perez Valentine, one of our recipients, is here with us alongside her wonderful mentor, Lynda Davis. They have been matched for an impressive nine years. Congratulations to Isabel and Lynda and to all of our scholarship winners and their mentors. We are very proud of our O P S scholarship winners as well as all of our mentees and mentors for staying committed to the program and each other year after year. I'd like to hand the mic over to Isabel and Lynda to share a brief message about their experience and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time, and please consider being a Teammates mentor yourself or nominating one by going to teammates.org. Thank you.
Hello, welcome. Okay, well, I am Isabel's mentor. I started with her in third grade and have watched her through the years, all the way to graduation this last, last year, and she's now starting at Metro. We continue to meet through a program called Teammates Plus. And I have to say, Isabel has made my heart grow. It has just been such an honor to watch her grow through the years and, and to help her become who she is, I guess.
I was so happy to see Lynda. The first time I saw her, she has molded me to the person I am today. She has definitely changed my values, and she has been an amazing role model my whole life.
Thank you. That's so awesome. Thank you, Lynda, for all that you've done to impact Isabel's life. And Isabel, thank you so much for sticking in with, with Teammates. I know that has had a tremendous impact on you, and we certainly appreciate the partnership that the two of you have, and hopefully will continue as she continues through higher ed. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Snipes?
Nine years in mentorship is serious dedication. I think you deserve to be applauded for that. I have the same question for you both, as someone who has mentored myself, and that is, what is the most valuable lesson you learned from the other? Or one of, I'm sure there's more than one.
I guess just to be there, don't be judgy, just be there, accept them how they are, and watch the growth.
I think my favorite part was just making memories with a, a role model that, that was really there for me. And another thing would just be, she was my main focus for school overall. Of school was usually my last worry, and she has definitely reminded me to prioritize that.
It's been fun watching as she's become more organized and more focused through the years.
Anyone else? Great, well, Isabel, we would love for you to come up and give us a fist bump. We have an O P S Proud pin for you. You can come up and start right here on this side.
Why do I stand right there in the center?
Right up here in the center, please.
You guys want to step this way just a little bit? One more big step this way. Perfect. Okay, everybody look this way. One, two, three. Like one more. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan?
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, those here in attendance and watching from home. I have a new catchphrase that I'm going to share, "Don't be judgy." And that was Lynda, Lynda Davis who said that. We want to start this evening first by wishing happy birthday to a person who keeps us safe at each of these meetings. He's celebrating his thirty-ninth birthday for a few times, and that's Steve Felice who's right here up front. So, Steve, thank you for keeping us safe and for sharing your birthday with us. We appreciate it. Tonight's staff will present two updates I would like to highlight, including the implementation of our college and career academies and pathways. Recently, many of our counselors gathered for professional learning about the opportunities with college and career academies and pathways. I enjoyed visiting with them. We know this is a collective, collective effort from the classroom to the counselor's office to families and our community partners. Later this month, we will host the first Superintendent's Advisory Council meeting, another space for dialogue, feedback, and brainstorming among student, staff, family, and community stakeholders. Also tonight, we will hear about reading recovery, yay, in our schools. I had the chance to see this focus intervention, which is really, is always considered the gold standard for early literacy intervention. It was outstanding. We are proud to highlight one of the many ways our educators are customizing instruction and tailoring supports to meet student needs. This week concludes our family fall conferences with elementary-level conferences. Already in October, high school and middle schools hosted family-teacher conferences. We encourage all families to participate. This is an excellent way to see what your students are doing in class and gain new ideas to keep the momentum going at home. Families with questions about their students' progress can always contact our schools. Staff and families, if you know an Omaha Public Schools teacher who deserves recognition, nominate them for a Buffett Outstanding Teacher Award. Visit buffettoutstandingteachers.org to show, to share how that educator has made a difference. Please submit your nomination by July, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Speaking of good news and outstanding educators, if you have not heard, the good news, Nebraska's, Nebraska's newest Teacher of the Year is one of our own. We celebrated Omaha Public Schools educator Lee Perez with the Nebraska Department of Education last week at Alice Buffett Middle School. Mr. Perez teaches English language learners. You can see video of the celebration on our website, and we will host Mr. Perez at the future Board of Education meeting as our O P S Proud Spotlight. Congratulations to Mr. Perez. Can we give him a clap in absentia? Congratulations are also in order for Jason Dorek, physical education teacher at Gateway Elementary, for receiving the Ignite Wellness Transportation Award from the Well-Being Partners, and to Leah Litz of Bancroft Elementary and Bree Valentine of Bryan Middle for their recognition as Nebraska State finalist for the two thousand twenty-one Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching by the Nebraska Department of Education. That really is a big deal. I should have read it with a little bit more vigor. But let's make sure to also clap for Leah Litz of Bancroft Elementary and Bree Valentine of Bryan Middle for their recognition as Nebraska State finalist for the two thousand twenty-one Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching. That was a much better effort. This concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
For colleagues? Ms. Cracky?
I have been out to some of the schools in my district and I, most of them, and I want to tell people out there, you really need to get into our schools, you really need to visit them to see what goes on in the schools. It's remarkable. Each school does something a little bit different from the other school. But you see things that we talk about at the Board. We talked about some of the things that we purchased for science, and I saw a teacher using those on, on the board in the room and having a lesson. And I wanted to sit down and maybe I would learn something because science was not something I was wonderful in, so I'd love it if I had been back in the classroom and had that opportunity. But for the rest of the places that I went, everybody, everything is orderly, everybody is learning, and I, it's just very impressive. So before you say anything negative about O P S, and that's for the people listening, please take an opportunity to see what we're really doing. And it was great, I'm going to go out again. The weather is better, I've had all my shots, and I will be looking forward to all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cracky. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you very much. I always like to point out when we've saved some money, and of course, item I six shows that we saved forty-two thousand dollars, so that's always a good thing. The other thing I'd like to point out, although it's getting to be sort of routine now, is item I four, which is the purchase of classroom tables for conference rooms, so on and so forth. And while that may seem sort of mundane, I do want to point out that, and thank the administration for hosting a tour of our new schools last year, I mean, sorry, last week, for some men, members of our city administration, including Mayor Stothard. And we stopped at both of the high schools, met with the new principals at both of the new high schools, and actually saw the chairs, the desks, the weight equipment, all of the things that we've been approving for purchase. So those schools, including the new elementary schools and middle school, are moving right along, and a year from now, we will have two new high schools and two new elementary schools. And they're getting, the equipment's showing up, so it's going to be exciting. Thank you. That's everything.
Thank you so much, Vice President Erdnberger. Okay, seeing no one else, we're moving on now to public comment. Masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you are not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. Tonight, we have nine speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That saying policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If your subject of public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking to those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with the recent passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify him or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent. As a result, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them from you. It is now six forty-seven P M., and our first speaker is Kenneth Bruegeman. Hello, and good evening.
Good evening, Kenneth or Ken Bruegeman, K E N B R U E G G E M A N N sixty-one eleven Bell Bedir Boulevard in Omaha. Board members and Dr. Logan, good evening. This is a simple thank you for supporting and maintaining the values which voters elected you to uphold. Thank you for avoiding excessive spending, as there can be many alluring byways for mission creep, particularly related to social justice initiatives in the current climate. Thank you for not embracing elements of critical race theory in all its guises. Thank you for recognizing staff, students, and parents as valued individuals during these past two years. And thank you for continuing to encourage free and open input at each meeting from parents and public in addressing local issues. In the words of Governor Ricketts, "It is not the role of federal officials to intervene in local school board meetings," as he recognized the need for vigorous dialogue on tough topics. your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the Board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them from you. It is now 6:47 PM, and our first speaker is Kenneth Bruegeman.
Hello, and good evening.
Good evening. Kenneth, or Ken Bruegeman, K-E-N-B-R-U-E-G-G-E-M-A-N-N, 6111 Bell Beadie Boulevard in Omaha. Board members and Dr. Logan, good evening. This is a simple thank you for supporting and maintaining the values which voters elected you to uphold. Thank you for avoiding excessive spending, as there can be many alluring byways for mission creep, particularly related to social justice initiatives in the current climate. Thank you for not embracing elements of critical race theory in all its guises. Thank you for recognizing staff, students, and parents as valued individuals during these past two years. And thank you for continuing to encourage free and open input at each meeting from parents and public in addressing local issues. In the words of Governor Ricketts, it is not the role of federal officials to intervene in local school board meetings, as he recognized the need for vigorous dialogue on tough topics. However, should conditions change, I want to thank you for giving me this time to include my name among those who express their concerns at these board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Delka Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know it's been positive, so let me just say that this is going to be a little bit heavier. My name is Julie Delka Miller, J-U-L-I-E, and the last name is D, as in David, E-L-K-A-M-I-L-L-E-R. Address is 6504 North 106th Street in Omaha. Dr. Logan, President Holman, and OPS School Board members, I am here as a mom of three daughters, and my highest priority has always been to keep them safe and to thrive in their uniqueness, physically, socially, emotionally, academically, and spiritually. However, my middle daughter was repeatedly raped and assaulted by an OPS teacher during the school day and on school property while a middle school student at Davis Middle School. The abuse was uncovered in December of 2015, and while we pleaded for help from OPS, the exact opposite happened. And more trauma has been inflicted on our family as a result of the OPS attorneys and the legal process for the last five years and 10 months. I've been in education myself for 28 years, and I trusted that OPS was going to help us in this aftermath. It never even occurred to me that there would be a civil case. For a variety of reasons, we started being very skeptical about the sincerity of OPS administration and started hearing things from numerous other OPS employees. That's when we realized we may need to get some help. According to the Board Policy 2300, outside legal counsel shall serve at the pleasure of the Board for such compensation as agreed upon, and shall ultimately be responsible to the Board. I realize that most of you were not on the Board in the initial discovery in December of 2015, when those horrendous events were uncovered, but I am sure you are familiar with the situation by now. Tonight, I want to share with you just some of the ways that the attorneys handled our family in your name. As part of the Rule 26-F report that was filed by the Baird Holmes attorneys in the name of Omaha Public Schools, they blamed our daughter for her own abuse. They stated that our daughter consented to this abusive relationship and that she did not tell anyone. In addition, the attorneys blamed us, as her parents, for not properly supervising or monitoring our daughter, and that the parents assumed the risks of sending the kids to school. The conflict for me, as both a mom and an educational professional, is that even though there were a minimum of 14 documented instances in which a faculty member or staff member mentioned a suspicious behavior to the principal, nothing was done. We also know that two middle school students went to the administrators on two different occasions with concerns about the teacher, and yet, nothing was done. Because nothing was done, the manipulative teacher was free to rape our daughter's brain for months before he raped her body. Yet, our daughter was blamed for being manipulated, and we, as her parents, were blamed because we sent her to school. And I will be giving, I'll give you a copy of, although I know you have access to that, but I'll give you a copy of that actual document, or screenshots of it. The attorneys acting in the name of the OPS School Board did not agree to meet remediation until July of 2017, a year and a half later, conveniently just a few days before the last school board meeting, before the deadline ran out for the state of Nebraska. They arrived late that morning and with a box of donut holes.
One minute.
They had obviously not read the police reports, because they took her into the hall just to ask her if she actually had been raped. I'll give you all of this. In the depositions then in 2018, mine lasted for nearly nine hours. And I repeated that we wanted our daughter protected, our family to be healed, and for change to happen. Yet the attorneys pursued a line of questioning about why I did not teach my own kids better, and actually, at one point, asked if I had a memory issue. In our daughter's deposition, they questioned her for nearly seven hours, in which she had to describe in detail, while they were also telling her that she was smarter than that to let it happen. They asserted that because she signed the student handbook, she was at fault. And I'll pass this out for you to read the rest of it, but actually, I hope other families come forward and share their experiences with you as well.
That's time.
Next, we have Naomi Delka Miller.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Naomi, N-A-O-M-I, Delka Miller, D-E-L-K-A-M-I-L-L-E-R, and my address is 6504 North 106th Street in Omaha. Dr. Logan and OPS School Board members, I was a student at Davis Middle School for sixth grade and just one semester of seventh grade. My trauma began when I learned about the abuse happening to my sister during the school day in the same exact classroom I learned algebra in. We have since learned that two middle school students went to the administrators on two different occasions with concerns about the teacher and my sister. Nothing was done. Think about this. Two middle school students could see that something was so bad that they went to the administration, twice, and my parents were never contacted. The teacher rapist was so popular that no one with the power to do anything actually did anything to protect my sister. No investigation was initiated. The principal never asked my sister any questions, and my parents were never called about any of these situations. No statements were taken. No witnesses were interviewed. No file was opened by the principal. No file was opened by any OPS administrator. No notes were taken or kept. Not one piece of paper was in the rapist's personal file. No discipline was given or recorded. No separation was compelled between my sister and the teacher. No action was taken to protect my sister. No interview was conducted of us or my sister. No interviews were conducted of the complaining witnesses. When an email was sent with photographic evidence, the principal did not even look at it. Even with all of this, the OPS attorneys acting in the name of the OPS School Board continued to increase the trauma on me and my family. In the deposition, it was clear that the attorneys wanted me to be weak. I told them that there were not just red flags. Every color of the flag was flying and being waved, and they kept being ignored. The OPS attorneys asked me about the red flags that my parents saw and didn't act on, without mention of the red flags Davis staff and administration ignored, specifically the one that my sister's classmates raised bluntly. The OPS attorneys kept pushing me to tell them about the disagreements in our family. I emphatically told them that none of us, that all of us want it to be resolved so that we could get the therapy we need, and that is never, it is never the victim's fault. Some of our ongoing trauma work is a direct result of the accusations by OPS attorneys and lack of empathy from the OPS administrators and school board. The current statistic is that 9.6% of students will experience educator sexual misconduct, ranging from inappropriate photos to the extensive rapes that my sister experienced during school hours and on school property. This means statistically that there are over 5,000 other families that could be dealing with this issue right now, and that as a Board, you may have an opportunity to actually help those families heal rather than exacerbating the problem. I was never trained on what to do when a popular teacher is acting inappropriately towards another student. I was never trained on what to do when adults fail to address the problem five years later. What has been done about training students? How do students know where to go? What rumors to report? And when those rumors are reported, like they were in this situation, how can students be sure that someone will listen? As a school board being responsible for policies, how have those policies changed in light of everything that went wrong for my sister? Thank you.
Next, we have Cory Delka Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cory Delka Miller, K-O-R-Y-D-E-L-K-A-M-I-L-L-E-R, 6504 North 106th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Dr. Logan, President Holman, and OPS Board members, as I said, my name is Cory Delka Miller. I come here today as an educator and a parent of a child who was sexually assaulted by an OPS educator. When it was discovered that our 14-year-old daughter had been repeatedly raped and assaulted on school grounds during the school day, we knew not to blame our daughter. We were focused on trying to find out a new way of living that involved protecting our family, getting the resources for healing, learning how to parent our other daughters post-discovery, and maintaining a unified front as parents, all while trying to be professional at our own work. We were trying to find a pathway forward while also trying to work within a system in which we were expecting educational professionals to care about us, to authentically want to learn what had happened and what possible mistakes they made. Naively, we expected the school district to read the police reports, acknowledge the problems, seek improvements, and do what they could to support our family during excruciatingly difficult time. We immediately asked for help, but we had to repeatedly inquire about this help from the district to see if anything could be done to assist our family. We were in dire straits. Two months later, February 26, 2016, we finally had a meeting with the Director of Human Resources, the principal of Davis Middle School, my wife, and myself. The meeting began with the Director of HR saying, quote, "I can't imagine what you are going through. In fact, I don't even want to imagine it." And I kept thinking that maybe someone does need to imagine what it's like to have a vulnerable middle school child completely brainwashed by a teacher and feeling betrayed by an educational system. This could have been prevented with more oversight and immediate reporting. The HR director said he reached out to the OPS Foundation, and they authorized $5,000 for our daughter's therapy, and we would have five years to use it. I asked how they arrived at that number, and they stated that they just thought it was enough. I then shared with them that my first bill for my first therapy and counseling was $250, and that was out of pocket for us. That was one therapeutic session. We asked about therapeutic and medical services for the entire family. Our daughter had, that our daughter had gone through. Our HR director said that we could submit those to him and to OPS, and they would be paid up to $5,000 for Lydia only. Again, we felt no empathy or compassion. In fact, it felt cold and aloof. It felt like an institution whose sole purpose was to protect itself at the expense of the victim and her family. Almost six years later, we are still waiting for help. We're still waiting for some empathy.
One minute.
We are still waiting for some show of compassion. We are still waiting for someone to reach out to us and to ask us what they could do to help our daughter and family heal. We are still waiting for answers. We are still waiting for help. We are still waiting for someone to help us
Thirty seconds.
heal our daughter and our family from the devastating and debilitating time that our daughter and family went through. Tonight, I ask the Board to help us stop waiting. Thank you.
Next, we have Matt Cabrera.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Matt Cabrera, M-A-T-T-C-A-B-R-E-R-A. Address is 4657 Woolworth, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106. So I just want to address something tonight. As I began to do a little research into the school district and this Board, I quickly found something concerning. The word equity is one of the values of this district. Three Board members use it in their biographical statements, and one Board member made it one of their subjects, one of the subjects of their collegiate studies. First, we need to understand that equity and equality do not mean the same thing. Each word is defined very differently, and in the context of the push for social justice, the words move even farther away from each other in their definitions. While equality or being created equal is a founding principle of this nation and deemed to be a God-given right, equity takes a far different approach. Equity is not about being equal or being given equal opportunity. Instead, it is about ensuring equal outcomes, no matter what it takes. Equity says that resources should not be allocated equally, but instead, those in power will determine who needs what resources and how much, even if it takes, it means taking from one group to give to others. The thinking behind this is that the equal outcomes can quote-unquote "be insured for all," no matter the level of effort by the participants, or in this case, we'll call it students. This idea of equity is not new. This idea and other wild ideas just like this were infamously preached by Vladimir Lenin to the factory workers in pre-Soviet Russia during the early 20th century. This idea of equity and those other wild ideas were a piece of this Marxist ideology that Lenin used to reprogram and brainwash the people of Russia, which led to the Bolshevik Revolution and eventually the rise of communism. For anyone who knows history, communism has failed societies that are stuck with it time and time again throughout history. Just ask those who lived in the Soviet Union during the 20th century, East Germany, or even current-day Cuba and Venezuela. Quote-unquote "ensuring equal outcomes" in those societies only made everyone's outcome worse, not better. And in the end, equity hurts the people that is designed to help the most. Look at this Board now, I figure that is when it comes to pushing ideas. One, ignorant to it. Two, you won't stand up against it. Part of the problem. If you are ignorant to it, then you need to educate yourself on history and how it will always try to repeat itself. You need to do your research to understand the true intent behind these ideologies that stem from the likes of people like Vladimir Lenin, Nikita Khrushchev, and other even more radicalized indoctrinators such as Saul Alinsky or Cloward and Piven. This will then arm you with the discernment you need to be able to effectively stand up against these failed ideologies. Once you are educated, then you need to stand up and defend our kids. If you are in the group that knows what's happening but will not stand against it, then I'm going to say it, shame on you. It's time for you to step down so we can put someone in your seat that will stand up for our kids. And finally, I really, really, really hope that nobody in this Board falls into Group Number Three and that you are complicit with this. But if you are, you need to have the guts to stand up and show yourself. Show people what you actually stand for, and that you're truly behind what equity really means. Not what it says on the surface, but what it really means. Your job is to educate and empower our kids to be the best versions of themselves that they can be. The hope is that with this, will help contribute to them becoming successful contributing members of society. And from what I've heard, you do a really good job of pushing back on those big issues, the right-in-your-face issues, but it's the little things like equity. If you do not understand the true intent, these are the things that erode the foundations of freedom and what this great nation was founded on.
One minute.
I'm going to say this. There's a great quote from Luke 17 here. It says, "It would be better for you to be thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around your neck than to cause one of the little ones to stumble." Remember the gravity of what you do and the weight of what you do in this position. You are responsible for our little ones. Do everything you can to protect them. Watch out for them. Empower them. Teach them to be excellent. Do not give them this mindset of they're owed something or they're entitled to something. The only thing we're entitled to is to wake up every day,
Thirty seconds.
breathe and bust our butts to be the best breathe and bust our butts to be the best versions of ourselves that we possibly can be. Thank you.
Next, we have Michaela Kazer.
Hello, my name is Michaela Kazer, and then I'm a student, so I don't have to say my address. Hi, my name is Michaela Kazer, and I'm here today to speak out against the evil ideology of critical race theory. Yes, I know that they've said that you've stood against it, but I do know that there are teachers that do push it and speak out and say things that are critical race theory, and it's still in the schools. And critical race theory is an evil ideology that comes straight from the pits of hell, that is made to hurt our children and create a division in every classroom in the United States of America. OPS cannot allow CRT to be taught in the classrooms. I'm here today to speak out and stand for the fifty thousand kids who have no voice because as stated in Matthew twenty-five forty, assuredly I say to you, "And as much as you did it to one of the least of these, my brethren, you did it to me." OPS must go against the grain of this evil culture and say no to CRT. I want to begin by letting you know that I attend a very diverse church in Omaha, where there are just as many people of color as there are people with white skin. Skin color has no effect on how we look at one another because we look at each other through the eyes of Jesus, which means that we are colorblind. I have many people with dark skin who are like a second family to me at my church. I have a pastor at my church who has dark skin, and he's a second father to me, and I look up to him in many ways. I have a lady at my church who has dark skin, and I call her my auntie. Two of my best friends at my church have dark skin. I attend three different prayer groups a week, which have many different people of different ethnicities in them. I love every single person regardless of how they look because I don't care about what people's skin color is. I just care about looking at them through the eyes of Jesus. I am now a homeschooled student, but I know what the effects CRT has on a student's life and mind. Through the evil caught media, CRT was constantly being pushed through the airwaves escalating during the summer of twenty-twenty riots. Because of the evil ideology of critical race theory, I began thinking that everyone who has dark skin hated me and that if I ever amounted to anything, it was because of my race. But I knew that that was false, and I knew what the Bible said, and I held fast because I knew that those were evil ideologies. And I'm just so thankful to Jesus for leading me to my church so I can see what true love looks like. Now that you know who I am, I'm praying that you do not turn your ears off to what I'm saying and why I'm speaking out against critical race theory. Critical race theory focuses on the idea that racism is embedded in the nation's institutions and that these institutions seek to maintain the dominance of white people in society. That is an evil unbiblical and dangerous philosophy to have and to instill in our children's minds. This country has not been perfect, but we have continuously strived to make everyone equal. We have even fought a whole civil war to ensure people's freedoms and rights. Because our founding fathers put in the Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and peace and happiness. We have strived and we have worked hard to get to that goal that our founding fathers placed, that every person has certain rights given by God that no person can take away. I'm not saying that there is not racism and prejudice in the world, but I'm not supporting racism and prejudice in any way, shape, or form, but I'm speaking against CRT because CRT is racist in and of itself. As we saw above, critical race theory focuses on the idea that racism is embedded in the nation's institutions and that these institutions seek to maintain the dominance of white people in society. To put that into simpler terms, that is stating that our country has institutions that favor white people and oppress people with color, which is simply not true. This country has every law in place that makes every single person equal regardless of race under the law. Every person has equal opportunity, but that does not mean that the outcome will all be the same, as he was saying, equity. If a child works harder in academics and after-school activities than another child, then the child that works harder will get the scholarships and the benefits regardless of what color skin they are. CRT tells our kids that no matter how hard they work, that if they have dark skin, they cannot succeed. This is an evil unbiblical ideology that cannot be allowed in our schools. We cannot allow our kids to develop a victim mentality, and CRT tries to instill that into our kids.
One minute.
The citizens of the United States are very aware of this, as seen in a recent poll. Fifty-eight percent of Americans have an unfavorable view of CRT compared to thirty-eight percent of Americans with a favorable view. Most tellingly, though, seventy-one percent of independents have a very unfavorable view of CRT. I know someone at my church who has two daughters, and they're dark-skinned, and she pulled them out of school because she was absolutely disgusted with the fact that CRT would be taught to her kids and that her kids would be taught that they're oppressed. Her daughters are now homeschooled, and I know many other families did that. Critical race theory is an evil unbiblical ideology that should never be tolerated in our schools. Parents and other students, we need to stand up and declare righteousness and biblical truth. We cannot stay silent because, as God said in Romans eight thirty-one, "If God is for us, who can be against us?" Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jacob Brandon. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Brandon, J-A-C-O-B-B-R-A-N-D-O-N. I reside at six-oh-eight Olinken Highway in Crescent. Before I begin, what I'm going to read you is based on thirty-two independent studies. I did send an email to Spencer Head. So if you would like a copy where you have clickable links, you can get ahold of him, or you can email me on the form that I filled out. Today, I'm going to speak about masking of our children. Many of us believe that this is considered child abuse. What I'd like to say is, with these thirty-two independent studies, every single one of them shows that masks are doing very little. If anything, they're harming our children. I do challenge you guys to find one reputable study that proves otherwise. I've spent two and a half months researching this topic, and I can't find one. So let's entertain the delusion that masks work. In order for that mask to work, you would have to replace it every twenty minutes because your mask becomes saturated around the mouth and nostrils after twenty minutes or so from the breath that we exhale, as it cannot escape as easily as it should. Once a mask becomes saturated, the droplets you were hoping they would catch now become aerosolized, and this is the same event every time you sneeze or cough while wearing a mask. This should be common sense, as you would be forcing a large amount of liquid through a small opening, no different than a hose or a pressure washer. Now, while your mask becomes saturated from the air breathing, it becomes a breeding ground for bacteria to grow, and, I'm sorry. And with that, our children are breathing that into their lungs. This usually leads to sickness in the form of pneumonia, colds, and flus. And of course, we all know that a hospital visit with those symptoms will automatically be labeled as COVID. The truth is, children simply do not readily acquire or spread the virus. Despite those trying to argue against this, it's already settled science. A few reasons for this is the lack of ACE two, we'll call them ACE two receptors, in the respiratory system. ACE two receptors develop later on in life, and they act as a SARS-CoV-2 protein receptor. This allows the virus to infect the cell. ACE two is a protein on the surface of many cell types, and this lower expression of ACE two in the nasal passages of children seems to be the key factor of why they do not readily contract or spread the virus or have as severe symptoms. In many cases, prolonged masking of children has been shown to increase CO2 levels in their system while decreasing the oxygen levels. At the very least, this can lead to a mental or physical fog, leaving our children lethargic. According to the CDC, it has been also linked to anxiety, shortness of breath, and fainting as well. Oxygen deprivation can also cause a child's metabolism, or affect a child's metabolism, neuron functions, both of which can lead to issues such as headaches, dizziness, drowsiness, reduced ability to concentrate, and a lower cognitive function. In a recent study out of Germany that was conducted with twenty-six thousand children, sixty-eight percent of parents reported these impairments after prolonged masking at school. In some cases, this can lead to neurodegenerative diseases. The scary part is, these diseases can take years to develop. Just because your child seems fine now doesn't mean they won't suffer later. And yet, we seem to be willing to play Russian roulette with our children's health because some politicians, teachers, or bought-and-paid-for doctors are telling us to. Prolonged masking of children causes a weakened immune system, which puts them on the losing side when faced with their next infection. They can also make a common cold infection much worse than is needed by forcing a stronger concentration of that infection in the nasal passages and mouth as they are unable to freely breathe and clear out those passages. We also must ask ourselves how this impairs their social growth as well. How can a child be expected to develop important social skills when they aren't able to read facial expressions that are cues that someone involuntarily gives that can let them know how someone is really feeling? Are they angry, sad, happy? It's also hard for them to develop relationships when all they see are eyes behind a mask. And at the same time, it strips them of their individuality. They go from humanistic to robotic in a sense.
Thirty seconds.
Keep in mind, this is also for the virus with a mortality rate that ranges from a point zero zero eight to a point zero five percent. Even with the emergence of the Delta variant, most likely due to the vaccine, the variant still is less deadlier than the flu. In closing, I leave you this. We are not going to stop fighting for our children while you put their health at risk on the basis of non-science or feelings. The dumbest thing anyone can do is come between a parent and their child.
Time.
Next, we have Larry Storer.
Thank you. Permission to take the mask off so that I can be heard?
I'm sorry, you must leave my mask on.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a citizen's prerogative, I guess, anyway. I am not aware of any mask mandate, but my name is Larry Storer, five-oh-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-two, and I had to put that all on the paper, did I not? Why do I have to disclose it again when other people can opt out of that? That's discriminatory. All over this country, people are speaking up to the school boards, but they're also speaking up to the National Association of School Boards, who you apparently answer to. That copy of the Nebraska's Open Meetings Act is a copy from them, National Association of School Boards, not from Nebraska Legislature. I can't trust every word in that document because that's somebody that's a progressive that wrote that and that sent it to you to tell you to post it, and you posted it late. It was updated in May, and you didn't post it till a few weeks ago. So you're violating the Open Meetings Act and the intent of the Open Meetings Act, which is, citizens like us can petition our government, whether you like to hear it or not. And you do not really have the right to decide who's offensive and who is not. First Amendment says that. Now, last week, I spoke about critical race theory that was put into a document, read to the citizens of Douglas County, and officially posted. If you read that, that is critical race theory. I objected to that. I asked him to change the wording before they passed it. I was, of course, escorted out of, for being out of order. And then, the representative felt it necessary to comment about my comments, not to me, but as I was going out of the building, so that everybody could hear it. But it is on tape. Now, I find that objectionable that OPS, you have, it's very difficult to find what the agenda is. If you're an average, non-educated citizen that went online to try and find what you're going to talk about, it doesn't say anything, and the newspaper doesn't report it. Somebody has a lock on the newspaper. Same thing with the other bodies in this town. We elect you, and you take an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. It is not a democracy, never was, never will be, unless the people that hold their hands up out here on the streets, right here in River City, by the way, call it a revolution. They have websites. They call it Revolutionary Action Party. They do not understand, they do not want black people to understand that when somebody holds their hands up like that in protest, that's the same shit that happens, I'm sorry, apologize, back in the twenties and thirties. Adolf Hitler grabbed the children, put him on his knee, and Mr. Goebbels pronounced that your children now belong to us. Huh. They're doing it nowadays, even right here in River City. We're in the center of the country, and I'm encouraged to see some citizens standing up to you. I cannot argue this out with each and every one of you individually as you purport that I have to do. That puts eleven against one. That's not fair.
One minute.
So we ought to be able to do this right here, right now, and maybe more than five minutes if necessary. And just because you think you do not have to reply, unless you invite me to talk back and forth, doesn't mean that it's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act and the First Amendment. And we do expect the Douglas County Attorney, the Nebraska Attorney General, to enforce the intent of the Open Meetings Act.
Thirty seconds.
I should not have to sue you. I should not have to spend my money, taxpayers' money, to sue you. I did go online and find, I did not find video recordings of what was said last time because it was somebody else's recording. I did not find a very expansive agenda, but I did find that you're considering changing some of the rules.
That's time.
It's called for a reasonable
Thank you, Mr. Storer. Next, we have David Studstall. Good evening.
Good evening. David Studstall, D-A-V-I-D-S-T-U-D-S-D-A-H-L. My address is two-six-one-two North one-hundred-and-twelfth Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-six-four, in Sub District Six. I'm here because we found out that OPS does not have a policy to notify parents of anything. Police can come in, take my child out of class repeatedly throughout the day, question her, and nobody has to call me and tell me. Nobody has to tell me what she's involved with. Nobody has to tell me, nobody has to call me and say, "Your daughter's a witness to anything, involved in anything." There is no policy for that. I started on how I wanted to approach this. And I wasn't going to name names, and I'm still not going to. I was initially going to name positions, but I won't do that either on this initial step because I want to play by the rules, and I want to get something accomplished here. I want to start a conversation to create the policy that parents need to be notified when their child is involved in something at school outside of the normal curriculum. We tried at the school level, and we failed. We were not given the opportunity to even voice our concerns. We tried at the, here in the Tac Building. And what do we need to do? That's where I found out there is no policy for this, and was referred to the school board. So here we are at the meeting. I wanted to speak publicly so that everybody knows if they haven't, I'm sure nobody's been told anything about any situation, and that's fine. We don't need to get into it in public. But I do want the time to meet with anybody that will listen to make a policy not for my daughter, because as I am wearing a West Side mask, we have filled out the paperwork to leave OPS now. If that's what it takes, that's what we'll do. But I am still, even if my kids leave OPS, I will still advocate for the kids that can't, for the parents that need to know what's going on with our children. Because whatever happens in school, most of these kids are in the same neighborhoods together. The city's broken down to where everybody goes, most everybody goes to a homeschool. Something happens in that school that bleeds out of that school and into the neighborhood. If something happens in the neighborhood, it carries over to the school. So there's safety there. When the police interviewed my daughter after four days, we already knew what was going on because my daughter talks to me. But it took four days before we went to the school, so why not a phone call? You guys told my child that you would contact us. Nobody ever did. I want that to change. Whether it's a parent or whether it's a teacher, whether it's an SRO, a counselor, doesn't matter what level it is, parents need to be involved, and the school needs to let the parents know And the school needs to let the parents know of what's going on in that school that's involving their child outside of the normal. Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Some move?
It's been moved by Mr. Snow. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Head. I will be abstaining from item C. Any other abstentions?
Also for my nine.
Ms. Snipes will also be abstaining?
Myself as well, Dr. Holman. Item I, nine, claim C as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cracky. Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to information items, item J two A, College and Career Academies and Pathways update. Tonight we have Ms. Susan Christopherson with us. And Katie Heck. Good evening and welcome both. And Delane Havlivic. I apologize.
Good evening. President, Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Logan, colleagues, and community here with us this evening. We are excited to bring you the updates on our work toward implementation of the Omaha Public Schools, College and Career Academies and Pathways. And as mentioned, Dr. Holman mentioned that Katie Heck-Weber, as well as Delane Havlivic are here with us tonight as well. Current happenings. As a part of our educational outreach, we are hosting industry partner connection events. We hosted our first one at Benson High School, focusing on construction and design. We had more than fifty attendees, including teachers, students, principals, and industry experts. And we are currently working to organize an additional six opportunities to share about the Omaha Public Schools, College and Career Academies, and Pathways with other businesses in the Omaha area. And at the Benson event, we shared one of our capstones projects that we are intending to deliver for our construction and design students at Benson, Bryan, and the Career Center, which is the opportunity to focus in on skilled trades by building a student-built house. Hopefully, maybe two. We'll see, right? We continue to meet monthly with tasks, tasks to be completed in between meetings with our school design teams, who are actively finalizing the series of courses with each pathway. We have hosted an advisory board workshop last week to assist in deepening our understanding of how to effectively work with our advisory boards. And, and at this time, our schools are also working to complete drafts of potential members for their advisory boards. We continue to plan for educational outreach to our students, families, and communities to assist in continuing to grow and deepen our awareness of the pathways and academies at each of our nine high schools. And we are currently collecting input from our freshmen and the staff supporting our freshmen. We continue to grow our teacher engagement. Dr. Logan has hosted our first fireside chat, which was held virtually. We have teacher representatives from each high school. We had about twenty-two teachers participate in that first fireside chat. These sessions provided opportunities for teachers to ask questions, share ideas, and provide solutions to assist in the implementation. Dr. Havlivic and Teaching and Learning Consultants led sessions at the October Curriculum Day, providing opportunities for our freshman seminar teachers and leads to collaborate on the implementation of our freshman academies. And this team also held roundtable conversations with our teachers and our, some of our business partners. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Katie Heck-Weber to share the current work that school counselors are engaging in.
Thank you. School counselors are committed to student success and are actively engaged in connecting students to their interests and passions. So to support school counselors in this work, all of our freshman academies have been designated either one or more school counselors to directly assist with freshmen. Every other week, freshman academy counselors get together to share trends, ideas, and solutions. Additionally, our high school counseling directors meet monthly to connect on how they can best support their students, their buildings, and their teams. As Dr. Logan mentioned earlier this month, eighth and ninth grade counselors participated in a workshop where they heard directly from each of our high schools and programs and Dr. Logan about the outstanding opportunities available to students and families in the Omaha Public Schools. Upcoming tomorrow, in fact, our high school directors will receive their third training with Dr. Nicole Cobb from Vanderbilt University, who will support them in this transition to the academy and pathway model. Following our workshop with Dr. Nicole Cobb, we will have one-on-one sessions with each of our high school directors to support them individually. We are also ecstatic to announce our first-ever eighth-grade counseling tour, well, where, as Dr. Logan mentioned earlier tonight, we will be taking each of our eighth-grade counselors to see all of our high schools and programs. We really believe that this hands-on experience will foster richer conversations with our students and families as they transition into high school. We're also looking forward to our upcoming meetings in November and December with all counselors K through twelve, where we will give them all the information they need to have expert conversations with students, families, and stakeholders about all the positive changes to come. Our school counselors are champions for all students and are often a first resource for families. These outreach efforts and those to come are evidence of school counselors' commitment to helping students and families during these transitional times. Thank you. I will turn it back to Ms. Christopherson.
Thank you, Katie. To help support the efforts that we're doing, going to be doing with the eighth-grade counselors, going and visiting all nine high schools, we have student ambassadors who are going to be trained this Wednesday. And we have about twelve, I believe it's ten to twelve students per high school coming to attend along with someone from their school, an adult supervisor to help, who engages and is a part of the conversations. We will continue our collaborative work, oops, should change the slide. We're also going to continue our collaborations with each school. We're actually at a point where we're meeting monthly. And in between those monthly meetings, there are next steps and tasks that either we're working to complete or the school is working to complete, so that we are staying in unison with each other. We are, as I said earlier, working on that pathway course, scope and sequence. Curriculum writing will begin soon, as well as considering what type of teacher training we will need to provide in order to help everyone feel comfortable with the adjustments of the curriculum they will be supporting. Dr. Logan mentioned it early in her comments that she will be leading a superintendent's advisory council. And that meeting, our very first one, will be held on October twenty-seventh. And it consists of about fifteen to twenty people who will be a part of this advisory board. And it includes students, teachers, business leaders, philanthropy, school counseling, principal, and community partners. And we're looking forward to engaging with them. The other component we are working on at this time is we are working on our work-based learning continuum structure. And which will include a college and career continuum, so what it is we want to see happen at ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. Internship opportunities, what does that look like? Even talking about the possibility of growing toward externships for teachers and how do we engage our teachers in and a part of that experience for them within the community. And of course, developing our actual capstone perimeters as we develop the curriculum for that final experience, their senior year. We are also utilizing a committee structure to develop a process for the customizer pathway, which will be shared with students during freshman seminar prior to registering for next year's classes. And before they select what it might be that they want to take a look at to start their pathway experience for their sophomore year. So we will be integrating that in and a part of their freshman seminar course. And at this time, we just want to say thank you for this opportunity to provide this update on our phase-in implementation of our Omaha Public Schools, College and Career Academies, and Pathways.
Fantastic. Thank you all for the presentation tonight. I will go ahead and turn it over to colleagues for those that have questions. Ms. Snipes?
Just really quick, earlier you mentioned getting input from some of the freshmen and the staff. I was just wondering what kind of input you're getting. And then, if you could like paint a picture for me of what an externship looks like?
I think, I'll start with the externship. At this point, it's really was a concept that was thrown out as we, we haven't developed that component yet. But as we start to work and develop the series of pathway courses, what might be an experience we feel or a teacher might ask for that they actually go and spend some time at a place of business or work so that they can actually be embedded into that opportunity that helps to deepen their understanding so that they can relate it back into the classroom? So that's some of the conversation that we would like to see happen toward the future. And then in regards to freshman feedback, during our times, Jane Luthke actually leads conversations with our freshman seminar teachers as well as our freshman leads. And we, just even today, she sent out a poll asking just a few questions. It's just a constant, like a feedback chain that we're always asking and inquiring so that we can always make sure that we are continuously improving what it is that we're doing.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
All three of you appreciate it. I love all the input on what will be done towards counselors. I, I've said before, I think that that piece is vital. The counselors are going to play such a large role in, in the rollout and of course, the face-to-face with our students, so I love everything I heard there. You mentioned teacher trainings and what that will look like, that that's something that's up and coming. I know that I personally have had some teachers reach out to me that will have very, will experience a lot, a lot, a lot of change from what they're currently doing. And I've had some teachers asking me when that is going to be presented to them, when they will get a full picture of what their job will look like. Some of these, I know teachers, some of the programs within our schools are being somewhat phased out, changed, they'll take on new roles. So I know that that's one piece that I've been actually, I've had a lot of teachers just kind of reach out and ask if there's a, a time when they'll be given a clear path on what their new role will look like.
Think it will continue to evolve because we want to make sure that we're continuing to support our students who are still finishing their path, their experience, their high school experience because it starts with our ninth graders. One of our next sessions that we're hoping, having with our design teams in this next month is we're meeting with leadership and then teachers are in and engaged because we need their help and expertise and actually mapping out that sequence and series of courses. And those are scheduled and those are coming, and we're doing them right after school. So we're going to be there to meet with leadership. We're actually going to go out and help with dismissal and be a part of that experience. And then we will engage and be, including more and more teachers as a part of that actual design. Because they will actually be instrumental in helping to determine those courses as we go.
Okay, so no timeframe as far as, you know, end of semester, just ongoing?
I would think it's going to start to get a little bit, yes, we'll just continue to phase as we go through.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. And thank you for your work on this and presenting. I really appreciate it. It's a lot of great information. So the, the first question I have for you is industry and community partners. And I know Dr. Logan was kind enough to invite me to a meeting with, with yourself and Brian Sloan and a few other folks with the Chamber of Commerce. And I know, you know, at the time, Mr. Sloan said that the chamber was really excited about the programming and really wanted to help. So how's, I guess, just how's the process coming along with getting, you know, industry and community partners? Are they as engaged as we had hoped they would be?
Yes.
I was, actually, so much so that we're going to probably need to get some more support for the office because we have so many partners. The day after, I guess the day, it was the day after the, the week after the vote, I spent, I think, the whole week meeting with business partners. And we have, the reason that we're doing individual breakfasts is because we literally have fifty people, many of them, we had some students, some staff, most of those, most of, almost all the rest of the people there were partners of some sort. And so in order to manage that, we couldn't do all of it together. We're going to need to segment it and we're probably going to need a little bit more support. Just so much for one secondary partnership person. So we have another person who was a former employee who comes in and helps, but we are looking at some more support in people that are not necessarily school-based or school experience, but on the business side. Ms. Cassidy, for your, for the question that you have, because I know it's pretty much all centers around one area of teaching that you're talking about. We actually met, Susan and I met with the university folks from University of Nebraska-Lincoln, who lead the, the teacher preparation for that. And kind of walked them through that, and it seemed, they talked, talked about how that really helped them understand that they are already certified to teach a lot of, actually, almost all the, all the courses that we talked about. Especially as it relates to the fact that we have a teaching academy in every school and they can all teach all of those courses. So we are very aware of that and have been meeting, they actually initiated a meeting as well. So just to, I wanted to speak a little bit more directly about what, I kind of know exactly where we're, where we're going there. The student survey is not out yet. We were, I know we were working last week to, to finish up the questions. I don't know if Scott Schmidt-Vonnie is, he might have left already for his real life. And Katie, do you want to, because I know you're involved, are you involved in this survey as well? Can you talk a little bit about the survey questions? Because we've really been working hard to understand students' experiences in the ninth grade and to understand why some students are connecting better than others. So one, for example, one thing we learned was, well, kids have been out of school a year and a half, right? And there are things that people were connected to before they left and then they didn't necessarily reconnect, like banned, you know, you know, many things. So I'll have Katie talk a little bit about how we're finishing up that survey. I believe the teacher survey went out already, but the student survey is being finished.
Yeah, so we always love to hear from our young people about what we're doing well and, and what we, where we can grow. I think that as we think about where students thrive and where they do best, we think about where we thrive and do best and where are we most comfortable as adults. And oftentimes, it's in places where we feel very connected, whether it's to peers or to the learning or to our future or to our goals. And so we're really trying to create a survey that can help tell us some of those nuances beyond just, do you feel connected? But where do you feel connected and, and help us drive those interventions to support their connections in all of those different places. Does that help?
Go ahead, Mr. Head.
Yeah, no, thank you for the information. I really appreciate that. And I'd imagine with partnering with the unions, same, successful hopefully?
Yes, oh yes. And they have been actively engaged with us for quite some time now. So it's just continuously to grow that partnerships.
Awesome, thank you. And one more real quick. And it's, I just keep looking at the calendar. It's hard to believe it's already middle of, end of October. And so what's, I guess, walk me through what's the rest of the school year look like for, you know, your average eighth-grade student that's looking to choose what high school they want to go to? I guess, how does the process change, you know, this year from how it's been in the past?
So I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing within the freshman seminar course and then Katie, if you wouldn't mind sharing about the registration process that we're working on. So with the freshman seminar course, we actually, our schools have actually worked to help and create and design lessons that will help better inform them about what are the opportunities for them within their own school. One of the nuances that we had learned prior to even all of this experience was some of our school, some of our students didn't even know and understand what was available to them in their own school. So we're working to create better awareness. And we're also taking during this, during freshman seminar class, they're also taking time to grow and better understand themselves. So they've done a multitude of different type of interest surveys and to better understand where their strengths are. And with that information, they would then work with the school counseling and through the entire registration process. And I'll let Katie talk about the registration process.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So registration is, is something that we are very proud of in the school counseling department. We have been helping students select a high school and select courses that best fit their learning style and best fit their interests and passion for, for many years. What I think is so exciting about our move to the academy and pathway model is essentially the team approach. So it's not just counselors having those conversations anymore. As, as Susan Christopherson mentioned, it is your freshman advisory teacher having those conversations with you. We now have advisement in every single one of our high schools and middle schools. So it's your advisement teacher having those conversations. It's a wraparound approach, so it's more of a holistic approach to really ensure that our students are knowing and aware of of all of the different opportunities and their access to those opportunities with courses and all of the extra offerings that we provide in the Omaha Public Schools.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
I was just going to add, we're also having conversations on how do we continue to promote the fine arts? So making sure the awareness of continuing in band, in orchestra, in chorus, in JROTC. We're working with the teaching and learning consultants through our school counselors as well just because we want students to find ways to continuously engage themselves even beyond the pathway experience.
Thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you. You know, I'm very excited about this, so nicely done. I love hearing the reports. To follow up on what I thought I heard Spencer answer, asking was, there's really two parts to what's going on. One is you've got your middle school eighth graders. And part of the question is, what are we doing to help them know all of the options that are available to them? And then I think your answer was really more about ninth graders, or maybe I misunderstood it. But there's kind of two things we have to do. Eighth graders don't know where they're going.
Yeah, we started with, so one of the things that we learned, we had a kind of a weakness in that we needed to do more education of our eighth grade counselors who do that. So that's the reason for the tours, the reason that they're coming, they came here for, and they're having, Ms. Heck-Weber is having additional, and her team are having additional meetings with them. But the tour that they will take, they'll also visit the Middle College and other, these other programs, the zoo program. So that, because we learned, you know, kids may or may not learn from that. We didn't want to be, we want to be a little less random on whether or not people had the information. And we did learn just by taking a survey of hands about how many people have visited different high schools. It was very, it was not as many as you could expect because people are, you know, busy doing their work. So that will become a kind of a ritual. And the schools will have an opportunity to, I don't want to say sell their programs, but to highlight their programs when they go for these visits. They'll also visit the two, the two new schools as a part, a part of that. Did I capture that pretty much? So anything else, Delane, that I'm missing? I think the Career Center is also a piece of it as well.
So really, it's outreach and we're looking at multiple points of outreach for students, for our families and for our staff altogether. So Susan had mentioned earlier that we are training a group of student ambassadors on Wednesday. We're really empowering those students who are, who are high school students to really be able to talk to our eighth graders and those that are coming through our high schools for open houses in the coming weeks and months as middle schoolers are trying to decide which high school is best for them. Also involved with outreach is, we've done showcase events in the past where we invited all of our high schools to come together at a central location. And they can each do a fair-type experience where families can walk through and learn more about each of the high schools, kind of in a one, one-stop approach. Finally, it's, we learned through the last year, many of our outreach aspects were digital and some of those worked really well for some of our families. So we'll have more opportunities that are digital, again, to share with our, with our students and families, whether they be emails, phone calls, and other connection points to that effect.
No, that's exciting. The ones, the one shop, the shopping mall of all the high schools, so they're all in one place, sounds really interesting. So that's, excuse me, I understand that's what we're doing with eighth graders. Now, ninth graders are already in a school. And is there, I mean, I know this just adds more work to the heavy load, but is there going to be an effort to help them see the bigger picture too? And how is, I mean, how is that happening so that kids who picked, I'll just pick Burke High School, but they now find out, how are they going to find out that there's something being offered at another school that they might prefer? What's the process for that?
Well, our intention isn't really to try to have kids just continuously change schools and everything. What we do want to make sure is that, as Katie mentioned earlier, just even with freshman seminar, the importance of feeling completely connected to your school and its offerings and its happenings. The pathways are a potential content area to explore and deepen an understanding of a particular content. But it's all also about those transferable skills. Just because I, if I'm going to Burke and I go into aviation, doesn't mean necessarily that I might choose a career in aviation, but the presentation skills, the research skills, all of those other skills that I'm working to attain in aviation can be applicable to whatever future I might choose to hold. And so it's really about making sure that we are continuing to grow an understanding of the skill sets that we're working to accomplish. And hopefully, they're getting an opportunity to do it in a content area of interest.
Well, let's do it the other way around then. Let's have somebody at Bryan High School. How do they, you know, we know that some kids at Burke don't even know the aviation program exists. So let's assume there's some kids at Bryan that don't know it exists. Are we sort of overwhelmed right now with everything that we're doing? Or is there going to be some level of an effort of informing all ninth graders at least what's going on at the other high schools? I know that we don't want everybody switching and swapping, but they're going to, you know.
Absolutely.
Some of them are going to have to, or we won't have any 10th graders.
Those are in and a part of the lessons that are embedded inside, especially as you look at the student partner zones, as you look at your, your high school and your plus ones. So, or what is, what is located within your zone? That we will continue to make sure our students are well-informed. But it's also about making sure that our community is well-informed too so that the students and parents are all having conversations about what is available to them through that outreach.
No, I'm excited about that. Two other questions, three. Could you explain what the school design team is and what they're doing?
Sure.
I think I know, but I'd like to hear it.
I'll do a little bit of that and then I'll have Delane add any additional details that I might not catch. Because Delane is working to lead those. We actually, it started from the beginning of conversation of just what are your pathways going to be? And even before the approval, right? So the work now is that group continues to grow. And so we're including more teachers, more people in and a part of the community, the school community, I should say, where we've talked about strengths, what it is that we're working and wanting to grow. And then from there, it's actually working with the content area-specific TLC to kind of talk through those pathways of courses. So it's like adding people as we get to the next level and next steps. You just continuously are adding more and more people. But the core of it would be their academy lead and their principal, curriculum specialist, school counselor, and then inviting and adding people in as we're focusing in on a particular area.
So there's one per school, is that what you're saying?
Yes, there's one per school.
Any additional details?
Just that, I know Susan talked about the, the design teams and we'd be at each school later this month or next month. It's more than really just a one-month meeting opportunity. We know that our, our teaching and learning consultants will be assembling those teams to come together multiple times, talking about the training questions that came up earlier, some of the course areas that may be new. Like, for example, I'm certified to teach business, which means accounting. I could also teach computer science. I don't know a thing about computer science at this point. So there'd be some specialized training to shift into those areas. Move forward with that content when we're ready to start it.
Thank you. And I guess my last question is about the create your own. I think it was the last item you had on there, which we all know was a really popular concept. But what are you doing to prepare people to help that happen? What was the point you were making?
So we actually have individuals from each of our high schools who will be a part of that design team. Meaning, we've created committees so that everybody is kind of has input in helping to create that. And so we have a meeting scheduled where we will bring them in and be a part of that. And then we will design the process for it, what a student needs to think about and consider if they want to potentially, as they've learned what's available to them in their school and say, I'm not really finding that right path for me. And what does that then look like? Because we're also in the process of developing the course guides, which helps to enlighten people on what are the actual offerings in each school. So we need to have different components together. But I think part of our conversation for the customize your pathway has components of even helping the student have voice and choice in what might be their capstone project that they would want to do at the completion of their pathway experience.
So it sounds like you're aiming also towards sort of a consistency of how you do it at all of our high schools. That's fantastic.
We hope that that will also help support conversations across all the schools because we'll be jointly and collectively working together.
Great. Well, maybe Spencer was asking sort of what happens next? When will we, do we already know when we're going to hear from them about? What is a logical time for you to get back to us again?
I believe we're.
Our, the logical time, we said that we would do a quarterly report, so we probably would do something in January.
Great.
Looking forward to it. One of the other outreaches that we're considering is just even a school staff having an opportunity to participate in the school tour so that all of the school staff truly knows and understands what's happening and available within their own school. So as Katie said, we have advisement across the district in all nine, soon to be nine high schools, that they're actually knowing and understanding what is available so that they can continue to be advocates as they have conversations with students, families, and community.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Well, I only have one question now, which is good. Can you tell me how the Career Center will fit in with all of this?
The Career Center fits in a multitude of different ways. It still remains an option for students to consider as a part of a pathway experience. As we're, we have a one, one pagers that we're developing, if you will, that says, here is the title of the pathway and here are the series of courses we would recommend. Or these are the courses you'll take. Here are some global pathways. And if an option might be for a student to go to the Career Center, it's actually on that pathway as an option. Or if something is not there, it might become a part of that create your own of what a student might be choosing to explore.
Great, thank you so much. Well, we certainly appreciate your time being here with us tonight and the presentation. We look forward to the next update.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, agenda is item day two B, reading recovery update. And tonight we have Ms. Mickey Holbeck with us and. Magical shoes? I heard you wear magical shoes all the time. And Ms. Donna Dobson, looks like she's with us tonight as well. I can't talk tonight, sorry.
Thank you. Hello, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, and Dr. Logan. Thank you for allowing me to share an update about reading recovery. My name is Mickey Holbeck and I'm the coordinator of early literacy. And this year, we started training six reading recovery teachers who are already providing reading recovery lessons to students in our three turnaround schools, Belvedere, Fontanelle, and Minna Lusa. Reading recovery is a short-term intervention that provides, for first grade children who have the greatest need in literacy learning. Children meet with a specially trained teacher for 30 minutes per day on an average of about 12 to 20 weeks. The goal is for children to develop effective readings and writing strategies on their grade level. One-on-one instruction with a reading recovery teacher is the most effective way to bring beginning readers up to the average of the class. Teachers tailor lessons to individual learning styles and they develop a deep understanding of the needs and the interests of the students that they work with. And that builds that relationship and that knowledge increases the child's engagement and eagerness to learn. Sorry, while I figure this out. Oh, there we go. The lessons generally follow a similar structure from day to day. Students start reading books that they've already read several times. Sorry. I always say that I struggle with clickers. There we go. And then they read a book that they've only read once the day before while the teacher takes a running record. Here, the teacher marks the words that the students read incorrectly and takes additional notes that inform her teaching for the remainder of the lesson. And the rest of the lesson includes students having an opportunity to work with letter sound relationships, to work with individual words. And they write a story and then assemble that cut-up story from a sentence that the teacher has cut apart and had them read. And then the last portion of the lesson is reading a new book. How are students selected for reading recovery? In the spring, kindergartners are placed in rank order of reading achievement according to standardized assessments. And then in the fall, teachers, the identified kindergartners will be reassessed using a observation survey of early literacy achievement. New students will be assessed as they enter school. And then a school team reviews the data to select students. Families are notified that their child has been invited to participate in reading recovery and a consent form is sent home. And a part of this consent is that the families commit to ensuring that the students attend, have regular attendance in school and also complete their daily take-home work, which is two books are sent home every day that the student has read several times and then they will reread them with a family member. And that cut-up sentence also goes home in an envelope and the students reassemble it and read it to a family member and then glue it in their journal. And then the family member signs a daily calendar that goes back and forth with the students. Families are invited and encouraged to come and watch a reading recovery lesson so they can see how their students are participating. And once a child reaches a reading level of 16, which is the equivalent of the end-of-year first grade expectations, they will be exited from the program and a new student will be selected from that fall list and reassessed. We are currently serving 38 first grade students with reading recovery. And by the end of the year, we will have provided reading recovery lessons to 76 Omaha Public School first graders. Why are we providing reading recovery in our schools? Reading recovery is focused on acceleration to ensure that students reach the level of their average peer. It's based on observation and assessment to tailor the teaching to student need. And effective instructional practices include components that maximize time spent reading and writing. Reading recovery teachers in training take two semester graduate-level courses that develop their theoretical understanding and practical application of literacy acquisition and theory. They also meet weekly for professional development with the reading recovery teacher leader, our own Nancy Mart. Reading recovery is a thoroughly researched and proven early literacy intervention. After a full series of lessons, about 72% of students will meet their goal. Reading recovery received the highest rating for general reading achievement reviewed by the What Works Clearinghouse and received a strong rating, which is the highest rating, from the Evidence for ESSA Analysis by Johns Hopkins University. And I'd like to finish with a short video of the components of reading recovery. I think I can do it. All right, this is Alice, a student at Minna Lusa, and her teacher, Ms. Kazer. And before I started filming, Alice had already read a couple of books that she had read several times. So this is the book that she has only read once before. And while she's reading it, you can see that Ms. Kazer is taking a running record. She's taking a lot of notes about what Alice is doing as she reads. And then we move into the work with letters. And here you can see that Alice is.
Two hands, girlfriend.
Alice is separating out the Y's from the H's as she's learning to quickly identify these different letters. And then next, she'll do some work with words. These are words that Ms. Kazer has chosen based on assessment or observation.
Eat. Yep. What about if I add this to the end of it? What does it become? Eating. How do I break apart eating into two parts? What two parts do I have? Eat and ing. And when I put them together, I get? Eating, check it. Good job. Ready?
And here, Alice is working on writing. You'll notice right now, she's writing above the spiral binder of this journal. And that's the practice page. So if Ms. Kazer thinks that she maybe needs help with the spelling of a word, she'll suggest that she start on the practice page first and then she can move the writing down to the final writing page.
What'd we say?
Alice has already composed this story orally and now she's just writing it down on the paper. on the paper. And I do want to say that Alice's mom, um, is aware that we're showing this pretty darn cute video to you tonight.
Good job. Okay. I'm gonna mix them up. Okay. You build it for me.
And now you get to see the story that Alice wrote.
Okay. Read it. Make sure you got it right.
Cats like yarn.
Cats like yarn and cat treats.
Ooh, what does he see?
And then the last part of the lesson is the reading of a new book.
A worm. A worm on his apple tree. Do you think he's happy?
No.
No. What is he saying to the worm? What do we think he's saying?
Get out of my apple.
Get out of my apple tree, right? What do you think the worm's gonna say?
Ms. Kazer is providing a rich introduction to this book, so that when Alice reads it, she, um, has some support and some, uh, builds kind of some background knowledge for her.
Do you think the caterpillar's gonna like that? Nope, I don't either.
Apple tree. And, no.
And you can see that Ms. Kazer is again doing a, uh, ra, running record and taking notes as Alice reads. And she's ready to just step in and provide support that, as Alice reads.
Yeah, like, ha. It does have the word cat in it. You're right. Keep reading.
I like, I like.
And then eventually, this book will become one of those familiar reads that she'll, um, read again and again at the beginning of future lessons.
We can share this apple tree. What do you say?
That was great. Do you think it's good if they shared an apple tree?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Right, 'cause they both like things on the apple tree.
They both like things on an apple tree. Do they like the same things? No, so they can share it, can't they?
And that is a sample reading recovery lesson. I have had the pleasure of seeing all six of our reading recovery teachers teach, um, students, and have witnessed firsthand the power of this intervention. And I'm so excited that we're, um, able to provide reading recovery to our students this year. And, um, we believe that with reading recovery and our high-quality literacy instructional materials, we will reach our goal of all students reading on grade level by third grade. Thank you so much.
I love this. This is so exciting. Thank you so much, colleagues. Ms. Krackey?
Uh, I took notes, and I wondered about, did I hear you right? Um, there were three schools that you named. Now, what happens if a child is at another school, but someone would recommend them? Would they move them to one of those three schools?
Uh, right now, the three schools that have reading recovery teachers are, are the ones that are able to provide reading recovery to students.
And so, what if a parent knows about this program, and they wanna go there for it?
Uh, um, that is an interesting question. I would imagine that, um, that they would have to follow the student, um, placement, uh, but I think that, um, I, it would be wonderful if, um, if we were able to provide reading recovery for, um, the students at the schools that they're, that we're currently at.
It, it seems to me that we did reading recovery in the past. Um, maybe a supervisor could tell us if we didn't do that in the past. I believe we did. Is this a different?
We've talked about it for a long time, but we've never had the opportunity to actually implement reading recovery.
Do it anywhere?
Yeah.
Well, what are we going to be doing to train other people for other schools if this is working well?
Well, we're just two months into it, and we are looking forward to being able to serve many more students. But at this time, we're just starting with our three turnaround schools.
Okay. And might this be offered in the summer?
Um, it's a po, it's always a possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. And, uh, Ms. Krackey asked, uh, the, I guess, the first question I had for you, but can you remind me again how many students you said you, you're intending to serve by the end of the school year?
Uh, by the end of the school year, seventy-six students will have received reading recovery lessons.
And that's between all three schools?
Correct.
And is that, uh, I guess, how many students were identified at the, at the start of the year? Are you continuing to identify students throughout the year as kind of openings come along?
Correct. So as openings come up, then students will be, will move into those open slots.
Okay. And so is seventy-six just kind of the, the amount of students you think are gonna need it, or do you, do you think there's more kids that could benefit from reading recovery that aren't gonna be able to get the services this year?
So reading recovery, as you saw, is, um, is a fantastic intensive intervention that's one-on-one with a specially-trained teacher. We also, our, um, classroom teachers are also providing interventions in the classroom for, um, our students as well. So, um, right now, the, because of the amount of reading recovery teachers that we have, the maximum of students that we could serve in a school year is seventy-six.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Ms. Nies?
Uh, Ms. Krackey. Uh, my first question is, students are selected, and I just. Um, kindergarten, um, data is reviewed in the springtime. Is there anything, um, that's like maybe sent home with the kids during that summer or something? Cause I know once they come back and there's additional assessments that are given. So I'm just wondering if maybe if some are identified at the end of that spring, and then maybe something goes home with them. Just wondering. And then, um, you talked about the opportunity for parents to come and watch. I'm just wondering if you're, um, getting parents who are coming and actually observing.
Uh, okay. So your first question was, would something be sent home with kindergarteners in the spring? Um, this would be the first spring, actually, that we're i- identifying students, um, at, in the spring. So that's a great question, um, and something that I think we could, um, consider. And just like, um, with, uh, additional supports that we provide for any students, um, we're always in, uh, co- communication with families and offering, um, support for students. So, um, absolutely. And then in terms of, can you remind me of your second question?
No, I was just asking, um, you mentioned how parents have the opportunity to come and observe. I was just wondering if you're getting, um, participation with that.
Um, I, I will have to, um, check on that. I do not, I, I couldn't say authoritatively if parents have come yet to observe, but they are always welcome to.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is the coolest little program. I love it. I say little because I hope it grows, but, um, so really, um, I'm first of all, just jealous of these teachers, these instructors. What a cool job. I, I don't have that much fun at work, ever. Um, in my next life, I think I'm gonna be one of these reading recovery instructors. Um, just remind me, there's, you said, okay, so we have three schools, three turnaround schools, and I think you said six teachers, so that two reading recovery specialists at each school?
Right.
Okay. Perfect. Um, assess how these students are chosen. Do MAP scores come into play with how we're assessing which students are in need?
Absolutely. So we look at, uh, a variety of standardized assessments. So it's, we really try to get a, a big picture.
Okay.
And then, um, then that school data team actually reviews the data and talks, um, talks through it. So it's a lot of, lot of people at the table when those decisions are being made.
Okay. Um, and just to kind of reiterate, um, obviously, all of our schools can have this. We're focusing on our turnaround schools, which is very critical and necessary. But I know just kind of, um, each school already has, I believe, a reading intervention specialist at all of our elementary schools, or at least I know some of them do. Not every school? Okay. But if you're, kind of to answer, to, to go with Mrs. Krackey, wondering if all schools will get this, just, I mean, I know e- even in my own child, um, I've been given some information on, you know, just different things that are available, and what my own child's teacher has assessed. So even though this might not be at all the schools, just, is there anything you can kind of give us with other schools? How, if they don't have this program?
Do you, do you want to talk a little bit, Donna, about literacy leads in our schools?
Yes.
And then, um, we do have, um, uh, we have, our, our team has asked for, in addition to the high-quality instructional materials that we, um, were approved by this board in February of twenty twenty, um, um, the Into Reading program, which we started last year, uh, we have added, uh, iRead, which is, um, available for our little, our littles. Um, third through fifth also have Lexia, which is available. So third graders actually have two interven, have, have the potential for two interventions. Um, the third, uh, we, uh, the AMIRA practice also allows, um, teachers to get detailed reports, um, that , uh, use artificial intelligence to kind of talk about how, um, uh, children are, um, to get, to give diagnostic information about how children are doing. So there are several interventions that we have, um, in place. Uh, we actually monitor those interventions. I actually meet with the team, uh, every other week. We look at the interventions. Um, I am actually meeting with all elementary school principals, and that is the first thing we do, is review the dosage data, because it won't help you to use these if you don't meet the dosage requirements, um, that, um, support the evidence-based, uh, reason that we selected it. Uh, just like taking an aspirin you have to take what, what it says. So, um, those are some of the additional things that we have, um, in place, in addition to our talented, uh, elementary school teachers, um, who, uh, know how to teach reading. And, um, we, um, have been working with Children's Literacy Initiative now for two years. Um, it, it's important to note that last year, the reading recovery teachers went, were in training. It, you have to have a whole year of training before you can even do it. E- each reading recovery teacher has, he has four students at a time, is that correct? Um, and so then in the afternoon, they pull small groups, but it's not reading recovery. So they, they will, they pull, um, the, reading recovery has, as, is very, um, highly structured. So teachers can have four students in the morning. Whatever they're doing in the afternoon would be for the selection of the, of the, of our, then district needs, which is they run, uh, intervention groups in the afternoon. So while they're serving the children who need the most intensive, um, uh, intervention in the morning, they are working with other, other students who, you know, could be similarly situated, um, but not necessarily in reading recovery. Um, reading recovery is, uh, resource-intensive, to say that the nicest way I can, um, but it is, um, highly effective. It's a program out of New Zealand. It's more than forty years old. Dr. Marie Clay was the, um, founder, um, of reading recovery. So very excited to have it. Um, in the United States, it really gained a lot of traction, um, in the, probably the eighties, but, um, also, um, when reading first came out in the early two thousands, uh, many schools went to reading recover, reading recovery. But it is, it is very resource-intensive. Uh, it pro, it provides, um, children who need the most, um, uh, acceleration, which is also a good part of it, because it focuses on where kids are and moving them forward, as opposed to the rearview mirror, and, um, is a great program for our young people.
And, and the nugget that I would add to that is, as we're doing this right now with three turnaround schools, Nancy Mart is going through the process. So she, by the end of this, will be a district trainer. She will be able to then provide training as we want to serve more students. So that's an exciting piece of that. Um, Ms. Cassidy, you asked about, um, some of the other supports. We do have ten literacy facilitators that each serve about three schools, and they do more of, um, a supporting teacher's role in using the resources and helping support instruction. Um, and then Mickey works very closely with CLI. We have eight schools that are part of our CLI focus, and they have what we call literacy leads. And so Mickey, do you want to talk a little more about the literacy leads?
Sure, sure. Um, and just like the literacy facilitators, the literacy leads work closely. Um, in this case, in the eight schools that we're partnering with CLI, uh, the kindergarten through third-grade teachers on, um, the literacy, uh, block, specifically implementation of Into Reading, as well as our focus on classroom culture and environment. And I just want to circle back, and thank you so much, Dr. Logan, for, um, your words about the other supports. Um, the, uh, intervention supports that she mentioned are also available for students to use at home, um, which is a really nice, uh, thing. And, and, and parents will actually get a, um, a flyer at conferences that will tell them exactly how to access those, um, products at home, and, um, and how often they should be using them.
You three absolutely answered my question. I was hav, I was struggling to come up with AMIRA and iRead, but I know there's a ton of resources available. So you all three collectively, just, I think, mentioned every single resource. Facilitators are what is, is what I was looking for, but just so that the public is aware that you've, you know, kind of to piggyback Mrs. Krackey's concern, if your child is not at one of these turnaround schools, there are ample resources. Our wonderful instructors, teachers at the, at the, uh, elementary level are well-equipped and ready to assess any child that might need extra reading support. So thank you, all three of you.
And families should look at conference time for the sheet that comes home that, that gives them the how-to access all of these, and, and with recommendations on how often and all of those details.
And I just want to say, one other, uh, exciting thing that we have going on in literacy is the, um, our grade-level leaders who are working closely with our, um, our Into Reading curriculum, and the publishers have trainers that work with them. And so at each of our elementary schools, we have teachers who are getting additional supports, which then they can share at their schools. Um, it's been a great process to kind of, um, build that teacher voice, um, and they're, uh, they're really helping us make sure that we're implementing Into Reading, um, to the best of our abilities. Ms. Krackey?
I wanted to note that you talked about, um, all the other things that are available in buildings, and I believe everyone has access to a resource teacher in the other schools. We do have a resource teacher. And many times, that person will come into the room and help, and sometimes say, well, we're out in the hall, like you were talking about. Um, and then I wanted to see the sheet that goes home at conference time to tell them if you could give us one of those sheets, so we can see what's being sent out and what that looks like.
We can do that.
And I'm still gonna go home and see what I find in my files on reading recovery. I mean, I'm just so aware, this, at some point, we were doing with that name. So, not that you're wrong, but maybe I've been around so long that I have it in a file somewhere. I, I usually find things somewhere in a file forever. I, I wonder who's gonna throw that away at some point.
Okay. Did you have a question? I'm sorry. I didn't see you at first. I apologize.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Um, so seventy-six students at three schools. It's about twenty-five per school. Is, is it evenly distributed like that, or is it a little lumpy?
Yeah.
Um, so what, what percentage of that is, of the, like, entire first-grade class at a school?
Oh, um, reading recovery is designed to serve twenty percent of the first graders in a school, so.
Okay. So it's actually kind of designed that way. It's the twenty percent. Okay. Fantastic. Um, and then one, I guess, what's our next, like, or what's our first, uh, check-in period to kind of see where children are, are coming along?
Yes. So, um, part of, as you saw, part of reading recovery is meticulous record-keeping and ongoing progress monitoring throughout the entire intervention. Um, we have worked with our, um, colleagues in research to, um, partner with the reading recovery data collection. So we'll be able to, um, to have, uh, results, I guess, for lack of a better word. Um, once, uh, I, as this year, the first session kind of winds down in probably ten more weeks or so, and then, um, and then we'll pick up another group of students. So, um, this first year, yes, we're, we're collecting a lot of, of data.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all so much for being with us tonight and sharing this wonderful information with us. Okay. Next on the agenda is item J2C, Information from the Policy Committee on Recommended Policy Updates. We have Mr. Tealyn with us.
I'm sorry. Um, yes, Policy Committee Update. So, we have been working through the Five Thousand Series, really just, uh, the, the primary focus has been, uh, sort of updating and clarifying. So just a lot of, um, simple language changes, some, you know, uh, things that we're changing that are, uh, maybe. simple language changes, some, you know, things that we're changing that are maybe typographical. Clarifying some things that, you know, make it more consistent with the way the district operates, so it's more clear to folks that read the policies how things will, you know, come out in practice. And that's, really, that's the focus of the bulk review of the 5000s that we've been doing. And I guess, let me stop there and see if there's any questions at this point about the 5000 series that we've uploaded to the agenda. Certainly, at this point, it's an information item, so there's, you know, obviously still room for input, and we'll bring it hopefully to the board for the first vote, the first reading at the next meeting. So first, I'll open it up to questions in the 5000s.
Mr. Head?
It's not necessarily a question, but I just wanted to say thank you, Chair Thielen and the rest of the policy committee. I know this is a significant undertaking to go through all the policy changes, so, no, when I read through it, everything looks good, but thank you everybody for your work.
Thank you. And I also, I want to go ahead and recognize Vice President Erdenberger for her meticulous line-by-line careful consideration of every word as we went through. It's a big task, and she's really taking the lead on it.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Thielen for being so nice to just refer to it as meticulous. I really appreciate that.
Okay, so, second, we had, we actually had two other items that we were, had intended tonight. We had, sorry, I'm trying to catch up on my agenda here. There we are. We had intended to bring the public comment policy before the board for an information item tonight. I looked at the document that was uploaded, and there was some ambiguity as to whether that was accurate to where the committee had actually landed. So we're gonna go back and just verify that before we bring it to the committee. And then, so that's 8346. And then the last, the one that we have on information item today is 6801, Technology Information Security. And this is really, just to direct the administration to make sure that we are following national standard for information security, giving some guidelines for how that gets implemented, so that it's clear kind of how we are going to move forward with information security. Any questions about that?
Well, we thank you all for your time and efforts on the policy committee. I know, like Mr. Head said, it's a huge undertaking, and I'm thankful for you all. Thank you.
Moving on now to item J2D, Student Assignment Plan Committee Update. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. Okay, so my report will probably take just about an hour. Just kidding. It could, though. We have that much information, but thankfully, I believe Mr. Ray, I think that you take credit for these lovely, maybe, there was actually so much information in our meeting, my committee members will attest to that, that I literally was like, I don't know how to report this. It's so much data that I didn't even know where to start. My notes are a total mess. So thank you. I believe it's Mr. Ray.
No, Dr. McFarlane and Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, whoever provided me with lovely notes to help keep me on task, because it is so much data that I was a little lost. Okay, so really, three areas. First of all, we met on September 27th. Back on Monday, September 27th. There's really three areas that we discussed. We reviewed the impacted groups that are going to be impacted for the 22-23 school year. We talked a little bit about our dual-language accommodations, which I'll briefly discuss. And then we talked about really the school choice and population planning for 22-23. So really, the highlights, I won't give you every single number. More will be coming, but believe me, we could be here an hour if I give you every number. But first things that, kind of the highlights and the main things, the next communication to families that are going to be impacted with either the new schools opening, boundary changes, grade level changes, losses to transportation, all of the things that are happening because of our student assignment plan. They're gonna be occurring in November. These communications are gonna be primarily through US mail, and then letters. Letters and student lists are gonna be prepared for each school, so that schools can individually start conversations at their building level. So impacted changes for 22-23, boundary, I'll just kind of give you a few highlights. First of all, by 2023, all of our elementary schools will have the fifth grade, will transition and make sure that they have the fifth grade. That's a big one for all of our elementary families. We will have, of course, students at every level, elementary, middle, well, actually, elementary and high school will have students that will be changing schools. In 2023, middle school, there will be no changes to schools for middle school students. There also will be students who are transitioning from elementary to middle school, of course, due to neighborhood changes. There will be, every level, there'll be dual-language changes, which I'll talk about in a moment. And then, of course, at the high school level, there'll be a large number of students transitioning from middle school to high school, and they will be informed that their neighborhood school will change as well. So there's just a lot of changes for each level, and we went through kind of each level. Grade level changes. I'll give you numbers here. 278 students at the elementary school level will be informed that they will remain at elementary school for fifth grade, to remain at their school. 92 elementary students will be informed that they will transition to middle school for sixth grade. So that's gonna be a big one for our elementary school students. There will be, of course, transportation eligibility changes for all of our levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Of course, these changes will be that transportation will no longer be available, and we've discussed that and gone over those numbers. That will be a big concern of our families, but of course, as we've discussed throughout, this has already been communicated to families and will be continued to be communicated. I won't talk a ton about the dual language. This is still being worked on, but just so you know, I know that we've talked a little bit about dual language at some of our meetings. There will be students that will be impacted by the boundary changes that are currently in dual language. The district is right now working on and tweaking, there'll be what is gonna be called a letter of intent process. Basically, will be, students in dual language will be able to fill out a letter of intent, which will basically give them some options with how they can proceed with the dual language program. And I think that we'll probably go over that in a little more detail once everything is ironed out. I think that's pretty much the highlights. Like I said, I won't go through every single number, but we did pretty much go into depth and look at all of our lovely charts and graphs on all the numbers. It was a pretty in-depth meeting, but those are pretty much the highlights at this point. Anyone have any specific questions? At this point?
Vice President Erdenberger?
Let's see if this showed up in your notes, but just to put it into perspective, about how many people would, if they all wanted to go in to continue with their dual language, but the boundaries have changed around them, do you have any idea about, excuse me, how many people that is?
I believe, I have this highlighted, 216 dual-language families will be given a letter of intent, and I wish Dr. McFarlane was here to make sure I'm correct.
Sorry, and that's at the elementary and middle school and high school, so that's for?
I think that's for both elementary and middle school.
Got it. Oh, thank you.
Just by the opening, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
It was a lot, people.
Yeah, again, not really a question. I apologize I missed the committee meeting. I think it might be the first meeting I've missed since being on the board.
I know, and I told you, it was a doozy to miss.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate, we've talked about what happened at the meeting a couple times, and you've done a great job answering any questions I had, and I, you know, definitely understand that you're on top of this, trust your knowledge of all of it, and thank you for staying on top of the dual-language issue. I know we've talked about that a number of times.
Be happy.
No, thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
We'll keep you updated as more comes. Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty then, thank you so much, Ms. Cassidy. Moving on to receipt a report, we have one reporter on the agenda this evening, item K1, CIBOC update for Phase 2 Bond Program, September 2021. We do not have closed session tonight, so let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:38 PM.